So Jerry, it looks like we have a quorum for both bodies. I know Lee Hilton Brand is excused today. Other planning commissioners, if you want to show yourself, you may, you don't have to. Feel free. Here's Karen. Hi Karen. So when the clock strikes two, you can kick us off.
Okay. And it has struck two. Hi. I'm Jerry Spegman and I am pinch hitting today. The mayor is not with us. Linda is with us, but still bouncing back from a physical healthcare challenge. But we're really glad you're with us, Linda. And so I'm just going to call this joint meeting of the planning commission and the city council to order. It's a regular regularly scheduled council work session. And the planning commission is joining us for a lengthy discussion with a guest from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, Brett Estes, who Leila will actually introduce in a bit. And we're talking about the comprehensive planning process that we're all facing in the immediate future. So as Leila mentioned, we do have three of the four current councillors. So we have a quorum of the council and I just ask Karen, the chair of the planning commission, to gavel in her team so we can begin this joint session.
Um, yeah. Hi, everybody. I guess this is a formal session, so it's 201 and we're in order.
Very good. So Leila, if you could introduce our guest and get us going.
Great. Well, it's my, my great pleasure to introduce Brett Estes, who is the North Coast Regional Representative from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And as councillor Spegman mentioned, we are probably about a month away from issuing a request for proposals to start an update to the city's comprehensive plan. The first real comprehensive update to the comprehensive plan in nearly 30 years. So I invited Brett to come and do a bit of a 101 on what comprehensive planning is. Oregon's got a unique land use planning system, so he'll go through some of the history, which I always find really fascinating. I'm a big fan of Senate Bill 100. It's kind of what inspired me to go into this career. I did want to, and hopefully won't bungle it too much, but do give a bit of an introduction to Brett. So Brett is no stranger to local government. Some of you may know that Brett served as a city manager in Astoria for a number of years. But prior to that, Brett and I share a little bit of a sort of career history here. He was the community development director and I think was pretty heavily involved in an update to their comp plan, zoning ordinance amendments. So I think he brings a really, and I think as a planner by training, was a planner up until becoming a community development director. So having crossed a similar path, I can say that having that kind of experience, sort of understanding comprehensive planning from the more sort of higher level down to how you make these changes on the ground and work in partnership with developers to actually get projects going, really brings a rich and unique perspective. And so I think we're really lucky to have Brett as our representative. He's a big help to me. I try not to harass him too much, but as a small city, we need all the help we can get. And so DLCD staff has always been really super helpful to me and really appreciate that. So I'm going to just hand it over to Brett from here and he's got a presentation to walk us through. And I think Brett, you can let us know how you would prefer to deal with questions if you want to take them throughout or kind of wait till the end. But with that Brett, floor is yours. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you, Leila. And thank you, members of the city council and planning commission. I appreciate the opportunity to be speaking with you today and be able to talk a little bit about the history of comprehensive planning, particularly within the state of Oregon. And as you get started on your comprehensive plan update over in Manzanita. And Leila is correct, you know, the, yeah, I'm a practicing planner over a couple of decades of work. Been in Oregon almost 20 years and working with the Oregon land use system. And I am the North Coast Regional Representative for the Department of Land Conservation Development, North Coast Representative. So I have the areas of primarily all of Lincoln County, all of Tillamook County, all of Clatsack County, and a good portion of Columbia County. I'm, well, I'm in the Salem offices today. My home offices are in Tillamook County over at Tillamook Bay Community College down in Tillamook, and then up in Astoria, Clatsack County. So I'm over in your area quite a bit, so I'm glad to be able to participate with you today. I'm going to go ahead and start sharing my presentation. But if there are questions along the way, please let me know. I'd be glad to be able to help clarify something and be able to dialogue into something a little bit more along the way and rather than having to wait to the end. But if you, at the end, if there's some follow-up questions, you know, feel free to save them there as well, whatever's your preference. So let's go ahead and get started. And. Okay. Can everyone see the presentation now? Very good. Okay. Do one quick adjustment. Okay, so let's go ahead and get rolling and start at the top, which is providing a little bit of history about the Oregon land use system. And really it starts back in 1919 when the legislature allowed cities to start to zone private land. And really the focus there was at the beginning of being able to zone was looking at segregating industrial uses from residential uses, trying to address some of those conflicts that you may have between industrial areas and any of those impacts and residential portions of a community. And in 1947, the legislature expanded the ability for counties to begin to zone private land. And that was further expanded in 1963 when the legislature established the EFU or Exclusive Farm Use Zone, really to look at protecting farmland within those rural areas. So as Leila had mentioned, Senate Bill 100 was really kind of the kickoff of the modern Oregon land use system as we know it. It's 50 years old. This is the, this year's the 50 year anniversary of Senate Bill 100. And Senate Bill 100 created the Land Conservation and Development Commission, which oversees my department, a group of appointees, and created the Department of Land Conservation and Development, my agency that I worked for. So after Senate Bill 100 was, was passed, there was the necessity to start creating statewide planning goals. And by 1975, the first 14 statewide planning goals were adopted by the Land Conservation and Development Commission. And then by 1976, you had 15 through 19 adopted. And you'll note that goals 16 through 19 are coastal resource goals, which apply to the coastal area, which, which I'm a part of and which Manzanita is located. So what happened following the creation of all of the statewide planning goals? Jurisdictions across the state, cities and counties, all were to update their comprehensive plans to be in concert and in conformance with the statewide planning goals. And there was a whole process by which the Land Conservation and Development Commission and DLCD reviewed those respective comprehensive plans and acknowledged them. Essentially set them in place as being acknowledged by the Department of Land Conservation Development and in conformance with the statewide planning goals. And we'll talk a little bit more about how that comes into play when you're going to be updating your comprehensive plan a little bit later on in the presentation. I would also note that, just to give a little bit more information about my division within the Department of Land Conservation Development, we're also, my division is part of the Coastal Zone Management Program, which looks to be able to address coastal issues. There are some requirements by NOAA, NOAA, the National Oceanic and Administrator, yeah, administration. The NOAA, the maritime sea of ocean based organization, not the Northwest Oregon Housing Authority, which sometimes folks in our area get confused. But there are some tasks which are, which are assigned to coastal states, including those which are adjacent to the Great Lakes, where, you know, it's looking at, at conformance with federal law in addressing coastal issues. And there's a whole division within the Department of Land Conservation Development, which, which focuses on that and which my division is a part of. So I want to talk a little bit first about, under the Oregon land use system, state and local responsibilities with regards to the Oregon land use system. So the state, through the Land Conservation Development Commission and our department, they set the land use policy of statewide significance through the application of the land use goals and then implementing rules. And there's, you know, periodically amendments to the statewide planning goals and also the rules that, that, that implement the goals. And that is all done, you know, through the work at the Department of Land Conservation Development and then, and then ultimately adopted through the Land Conservation Development Commission. So DLCD staff help enforce the statewide planning goals. We're not there as a regulator on the, on the ground in local jurisdictions, but working in partnership with the, the counties and the cities within our area to ensure that, that the intent of the goals is being implemented. So whenever there are any changes to any comprehensive plans or zoning amendment or zoning text amendments or zoning map amendments, DLCD has a part in reviewing those to ensure compliance with the statewide planning goals and the respective rules. Lastly, the Department of Land Conservation Development provides technical assistance to local jurisdictions. I'm the person on the ground within the area, more of a generalist to be able to, be able to, you know, answer any, any, any technical questions. And if there's something which is specific to a certain focus area, be it beaches and dunes, be it economic development or housing, there are technical specialists within the department who I'm able to connect the local jurisdictions to if there's questions along the way. So now looking at the responsibilities for cities and counties. Cities and counties are addressing the local vision of their individual community that, you know, each community is going to have a little bit different tenor or a little bit different perspective on some things. And they get to factor that in while addressing the statewide planning rules. They individually adopt and amend their plans and their comprehensive plans and their development codes in compliance with the statewide planning goals and rules. They individually enforce their respective codes and ordinances that are in place. And they process permits and make land use decisions through the review process, some of which go to your planning commission, some maybe a staff administered. And with the city council being the ultimate review authority for any appeals. So here are the 19 statewide planning goals. I'm going to break these down into a little bit more here in a bit, but I'll let you kind of take a look at, you know, the breadth of issues that, you know, that the statewide planning goals encompass. Ultimately, the city of Manzanita's comprehensive plan is going to focus on all the applicable goals that are, which need to be addressed within your community. For instance, you won't be needing to address goal 15, the Willamette River Greenway. That's one that would only apply to communities within the Willamette Valley. But you have the, the other statewide planning goals that your comprehensive plan will address. And you'll see correspondence between the, the statewide planning goals and your existing comprehensive plan document and what you're going to move forward with in the future. So in breaking down the statewide planning goals a little bit more, goals one and two are really the referred to as the process goals. Goal one being citizen involvement and that itself, it being goal one, really highlights the importance of citizen involvement within the Oregon land use system. The overall overarching intent is to develop a citizen involvement program that ensures the opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of a planning process. And, you know, the comprehensive plan update that you're going to be undertaking is going to most likely be having a set of public involvement protocols or procedures or, or set of meetings, you know, that can be adjusted to what is appropriate and, and something that is recognizable to your, your, your citizenry. And that's something I'm sure that Leila could speak to a little bit more as to what would, you know, be happening within your update. But goal two is dealing with the overarching land use planning effort. And so that is really establishing a planning process and a policy framework as the basis for all the decisions that you would be making with regards to land use. And to ensure that there is an adequate factual base for those decisions and actions that you would be taking as members of the planning commission and ultimately the city council on appeal. And then also any actions that your staff would be taking in reviewing any ministerial permits. So the next two goals, three and four, are really the rural goals dealing with agricultural lands and forest lands. Leila, I'm assuming you don't have any for, any in your city limits, any, any forest lands. I know that there are some jurisdictions, cities that do, but I can't recall if Manzanita has any areas, any timber management areas within your city limits. Is that correct?
Not within our city limits. Yeah, you're correct. Yeah.
Very rarely does that happen where a city has goal four lands within their area. But it does happen, it does happen periodically. Really, it's, it's where maybe the city limits is greater than its urban growth boundary. And so they're having to do some forest planning. So goals 14, 10, nine, 11, 12, and eight are all the urbanized goals, where you are going to be looking at those aspects within your comprehensive plan update, looking at how the, the city of Manzanita is going to grow or develop, looking at issues for housing and employment lands, addressing public facility needs within your community, and then focusing on issues such as transportation and also recreational needs within the city. So then there are a couple of goals which refer to as constraint goals, dealing areas which are subject to natural hazards, tsunami and inundation areas, those types of flood hazards, those types of issues. Goal five, dealing with open space and scenic areas, if there are any protected cultural resources or historic areas within your community. So this diagram is really kind of looking at how local decisions are made within the Oregon land use system and how your comprehensive plan would fit into that process. At the top, you've got your statewide planning goals and which are managed by DLCD and the Land Conservation and Development Commission. Then you have your Oregon revised statutes, which come from legislative laws that come into place. And then those many times are going to be implemented by rules or Oregon administrative rules, which, which apply to the local jurisdictions. And so the Oregon administrative rules, along with any statutes and your statewide planning goals, are going to factor into the development of the city of Manzanita's comprehensive plan. So then moving further, your local ordinances, your zoning ordinance, your subdivision ordinance, your other local codes, which are based upon land use issues, are going to be what your jurisdiction is going to be using to be able to process any land use applications that come your way. And then that's where it comes down to the processing of permits to make your local land use decisions. All of these individual items factor in to the local decision-making process. But the, but at least you can see how at the state level, you have the rules which then trickle down to the city's comprehensive plan and then development code ordinances. So I'd like to be able to look at the Oregon land use system implementation like this. With your statewide planning goals, you're looking at the 30,000 foot level. The statewide planning goals require local jurisdictions to adopt comprehensive plans to implement the goals. And then your comprehensive plan is at the 10,000 foot level. It reflects local perspectives while implementing the goals. And this is where you get to incorporate the taste and feel of your community within the comprehensive plan for the city of Manzanita. And then you're implementing ordinances such as zoning courts. That's where the rubber hits the road. The comprehensive plan policies are used to guide the creation of the implementing codes or laws that would be passed by the city council. And these codes are, codes are, are what are used to review any land use applications or development proposals. So let's now talk a little bit more specifically about a comprehensive plan generally. The comprehensive plan establishes the vision for the community and this is what the city of Manzanita will be looking at is, is, you know, what is the vision for your planning horizon that you're going to be, going to be looking at? You know, what, what do you, how are you seeing the, the city in changing in the future? Is there, is there something new or different that, that is looking to be achieved moving into the future? So the comprehensive plan is the guiding land use document for a local government in that it is ultimately going to be used to, to implement the, the development codes for the city. So it's going to guide the land use codes, infrastructure that may be needed within the community, any development which may have and happen, the conservation of any natural areas, and will also be focusing on economic development. So the comp plan itself includes some basic components. There's going to be the factual base of the community, which goes into the natural, social and economic information that supports the policies that are developed within the plan. It's really just a, it's a set of information which captures things as is, or they, as they are today and talks about your community in general in terms of your, your population and some of the attributes which the community will have. The comp plan will have a set of goals and policies, which are statements, which will be used to guide any implementing measures. And again, these goals and policies need to comply with the requirements of the Oregon statewide planning goals that I mentioned earlier. You're going to have some implementing measures, which are statements as to how the plan, goals and policies are to be implemented. And you're going to have a set of maps. This could include a future land use map. They could be focused on individual sub areas of the community. So something to note is city and county comprehensive plans need to be consistent with one another. So you're looking at those adjacencies where your planning activities abut those in an incorporated Tillamook County. And if there are any special districts or any state agency plans that affect the city of Manzanita, those need to be coordinated within the comprehensive plan as well. So we come now to, you have a comprehensive plan that's been acknowledged. I talked about how in the period from 1976 to 1986, there were all the jurisdictions within the state had their comprehensive plans acknowledged. So what happens if you need to go back and update something, either incrementally or something greater like what you're doing here in Manzanita? Are you stuck with what you got? The answer is no. There's something which is referred to as a post acknowledgement plan amendment or a PAPA, whereby you go through the process of updating your comprehensive plan and the Department of Land Conservation and Development is notified of that. There's a 35 day notice before your first evidentiary hearing and the department has the ability to review and comment through the process. The department doesn't have the ability to stop the process or to be able to say, no, this, this won't work. But the department has the ability to provide testimony during the approval process at the planning commission and city council if there are any concerns. You know, ideally, you know, we're going to be working through things along the way. And so that when you have a draft that's brought, brought forward for review, we're going to have some level of comfort that everything is, is moving forward copacetically. And, but if there is an issue, the department has the ability to weigh in during the public hearing process. If it's, if, if it's not changed and there's a disagreement between the implementation of statewide planning goals, then the Department of Land Conservation Development has the ability to appeal to LUBA or the Land Use Board of Appeals. Uh, and so that's kind of just the way that, that this works um in having the Department of Land Conservation Development incorporate throughout the, the whole process. And, and also having the ability for us to, to try and ensure that the statewide planning goals are adequately addressed. So now let's talk about your zoning or development codes. That's where you're going to have the specific regulations um which are designed to implement your comprehensive plan policies. This is going to get into details like land uses, um height requirements, setbacks, um location of uh, of certain types of development. It's going to include the criteria that any sort of land use application would need to meet. And it includes the permitting procedures um and for zoning issues as well as uh subdivision or partition or land division standards. So I, I would note that the, the PAPA process that I'd mentioned before that applies for comprehensive plan updates. It also applies for any zoning ordinance updates where the Department of Land Conservation and Development has the ability to weigh in and participate along the way to ensure conformance with the statewide planning goals. So um, you know, we have members of the city council here and members of the planning commission. And I, I show this to, to kind of move into the next conversation in terms of roles and responsibilities of the planning commission and city council when you get to the adoption process of your comprehensive plan update. So uh, there are four different types of land use decisions. Um, you know, we can talk about within the Oregon land use system. I'm only going to focus on the legislative today. Uh, just because I'm not going to get into permits, um want to be able to focus on, on comprehensive plans and a comprehensive plan update is ultimately a legislative land use decision. You're creating new law, you're creating new uh something, um new policy, I should say, um that, that's going to come into play. If once you adopt your comprehensive plan, then you're going to have also development code updates or zoning ordinance that may be necessary. Those would also be legislative in nature. So when updating your conference plan, again, this is a legislative land use decision. You're focusing on the adoption and amendment of policies and/or ordinances. And a legislative um land use process is focusing on a large geographic area with many ownerships. There is no decision required. As with a permit, uh where you have like a quasi judicial uh hearing, you may hear something about a hundred and twenty day rule where there's a hundred and twenty days to be able to process uh the application. You don't have that with a legislative land use process. You typically have a minimum of two hearings, one before the planning commission where they will consider uh the uh, the legislative changes and it doesn't, the minimum is one before the planning commission. More can be needed, but they make the recommendation up to the city council where this would be adopted by the elected officials or in this case, the city council of Manzanita. So with an update, uh there can be the, um, the general notices. And there can be with any zoning ordinance updates, what's called a ballot measure fifty-six notice. Uh, which is uh required um after um, there was a citizen um initiative uh which required this specific type of notice uh when you're uh changing um zone, the zoning districts of a specific property. So that's something to, to be uh aware of when you start getting to implementing your comprehensive plan through any, if there are any uh zone map changes. So in looking at a legislative hearing, you have the focus on wanting to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to participate in the process. That's, that's the goal here. Um, when you're looking at the hearing itself in your more formal permit review processes, you probably have where you take testimony in favor and then in opposition. It's not required under a legislative hearing. You can choose to do that, but it's not, not required. You don't have your concerns of ex parte contact or bias like you do whenever you have a, when you have a, a permit. Um, in that you're there to be able to listen uh to individuals in the community um to be able to set the policy and moving forward. Um, there are still the issues of uh, of conflicts of interest. Um, if there is a financial, um potentially a, a financial uh gain issue to, to focus on, but I don't want to get into conflicts of interest too much, but just note that at least you don't have the same issues with ex parte contacts like you do whenever you're reviewing a permit. So um, there are a couple of uh, of um handbooks which are out there um for Oregon planning commissioners talking about um their role generally. And also a guide for public officials which uh may be of, of interest. Um, and Leila, I can send this PowerPoint presentation over, uh so you've got that if you uh, to be able to get these um web addresses. And also a um, a guide for local government um implementation of the Oregon land use system put in, put on by a DLCD that um you all may be interested in. You know, some other areas which if you want to dig into Oregon revised statutes. Um, here's a few Oregon revised statutes sections. Um, you know, ORS one nine seven, if you want to kind of look at, at, at how that's all laid out broadly at the state level. Um, one nine seven is really kind of your focus area for your comprehensive uh land use planning coordination efforts. And this is um the end of the presentation and I would be glad to answer any questions. And um, and you know, participate in any conversation that's uh, that's desired.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Brett, and um I guess we now open the floor to any questions uh from counselors or uh commissioners to Brett. John, John Collier's got a question?
Um, during all the Manzanita lofts meetings and such, um, there was some discussion about the comprehensive plan and the z- local zoning ordinance which had precedent over the other. Um, is that a question that's relevant here or does it even matter?
Leila, I'm gonna maybe ask if you want to, if you can touch that since I'm, I'm not as familiar with the, that specific permit. Um.
Well, the question isn't about the, the project that I'm referring to. It's about in general. Um, which has precedent, you get some sort of, not a conflict, but if there's a difference in one versus the other.
Yeah, so.
Do you refer back to the comprehensive plan or just go with the ordinance?
Well, I mean, there's, there's first of all, your, your, your zoning ordinance is what is, is implementing your comprehensive plan. There are some comprehensive plans which are structured. Um, and I've seen it where there may be an approval criteria for some types of permits that say um and is in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan. But that's one of the approval criterion to address. And then comes looking at the, at the comprehensive plan and, and having the conversations back and forth. And I don't know if that came in, if that criterion is, is in the permit that you're referring to. But you know, generally what you're looking at is, is development code. There, there are sometimes conflict, if there, if there's a recognized conflict between the and development code and, and comprehensive plan, um then th- there can be that, that issue. If you have a um a conflict, you sometimes see on, on land use maps, there may be a future land use map that has a different implementing zone than the future land use designation. And there's some case law that refers that as a Baker conflict. Um, what to, that in that case, you know, the, the comprehensive plan prevails. But um, you know, it's sometimes what you see is that there may be differences in interpretation. At one point in time, a city worked on implementing zoning ordinance language that implemented the comprehensive plan. And then sometimes there may be some differences that come up where, where a subsequent council may say, well, um, we interpret things a little bit differently and to the comprehensive plan, but the, the fact is, is that a prior council had put in place some implementing zoning ordinance language based upon their understanding and interpretation of their, their individual comprehensive plan. So Leila, I don't know, you know, how this specific permit was, was structured or anything like that. And maybe if you want to talk about it a little bit more specifically as to um what was applicable there. And I'd be glad to chime in and participate in the conversation.
Yeah, I think um you did a nice job sort of addressing the, the larger kind of issue. And this was a, a limited land use decision. And so um you know, e- effectively, I think as Brett described, the comp plan sets the general goals, the aspirational goals, but not the approval criteria. And um, I can't remember what section of, I think it's ORS one ninety-seven where it really says that the county, I mean, the city, we need to adopt those overarching goals and aspirations into the development code. And in a limited land use decision, the comprehensive plan provisions can't be used as a basis for a decision. Um, that it has to be based on the plain language and the plain meaning of the zoning ordinance. So effectively, the cities, in this case, us as a city, our responsibility is to effectively translate those policies and goals into ordinance language that can then be evaluated. Um, and so that's, and that was the issue with this application is that it was denied on the basis of not meeting um a, that was one of the issues that it was denied on initially. Um, and it was remanded back from the Land Use Board of Appeals and very clearly stated that we could not deny the application based on that because it was a limited land use decision. So I think the point that Brett made, which is a very good one, that the interpretation at the time that the ordinance was adopted may be a little different than what folks feel like it should be now. But it is what it is. And so we have to rely on the ordinance language in order to evaluate land use applications that are limited land use applications. So we'll get a chance to take another go at all of this as we update our comp plan because invariably those goals are going to change, um, they're going to be enhanced. And so um, part of uh what we'll be doing is there's kind of two steps here. We'll be doing a comprehensive plan update. Then we need to implement the comprehensive plan and those are two separate actions, right? So we may have new policies. Um, those policies will then need to be translated into our zoning ordinance. Um, and so that will happen after the comprehensive plan is updated.
And, and.
So those are, those are really important distinctions, I think.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to speak to that a, a little bit. Um, I've been a part of a number of processes over the years where you know, you go through a conference, a comprehensive planning effort. And there's a lot of hard lifting and a lot of heavy work that's, that's been done to get that comprehensive plan updated. And you get done and you get it adopted and, and everyone feels really good about um, you know, the, the good work that's been done. I'm going to say that the next step of implementing the comprehensive plan um can, can get challenging and, and, and the reason why is you start having the various interpretations that come to mean, come to bear about, well, what does this policy mean? And how do we specifically make the rubber hit the road? That's what I was saying a little bit earlier. Zoning ordinance is really where the rubber hits the road. And, and you're taking this, this comprehensive plan policy language and putting hard and fast numbers or, or figures uh in for development standards. Or poli- or taking policies and putting into place law that um, that says how you would like uh to see land use pre- processed in the future.
Uh Brett, on that, on that topic, I'm just curious is even though the sequence makes sense, you do the comprehensive plan and then you go about the process of making any changes to the zoning code to implement any new uh policies in the plan. Is there any advantage to taking somewhat of a concurrent approach? So as you're going through the planning process, can we be doing anything with the code so that we're not starting flat-footed? Whereas it, do you have to pretty much do A and then do B in sequence?
I mean, I'm going to say that, I mean, if, let's say you were just doing us, um focused on a small little area. I've seen some times where it's done at the same time where you amend the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. But when you're taking something as large as a whole city rewrite of a comprehensive plan, that's a whole lot to also be going and, and doing the, the code work simultaneously. Um, because I mean, you have a, a lot that you're having to focus on, um, on writing, you know, what you would like your community to be in the future. And sometimes that in itself takes a, a good amount of effort to be able to gain concurrence, to be able to gain uh consensus to a point, to be able to make a decision. And then to be able to go and start working on the implementation. Yeah, I, I, I don't think I've really ever seen it where, where a full comp plan and zoning ordinance is done all at, at the same time. Maybe just a small, if there was a small individual area, I, I've seen that happen where it's done concurrently.
One note that because we have some pretty clear guidance from the state on middle housing. We will be doing amendments or recommending amendments and doing that residential component as it relates to middle housing concurrent with our comprehensive plan update. At least that's the hope and the dream. And Brett and I had a conversation about this. Um, but that's because the rules from the state about what we're required to do with respect to middle housing are pretty clear. And just even the preliminary outreach that we did last year in terms of, you know, the town halls that I held with the community. You know, workforce and affordable housing were top of mind for everyone. Um, you know, goal ten, uh which is the housing goal. We'll be starting kind of with that effectively so that we can start to develop the code language, but we already have guidance. Whereas I think as Brett mentioned, and I appreciate the kind of backup support here is that doing it all at once is a bit overwhelming because many of the chapters intersect with each other. So uh you, natural resource protection, beaches and dunes and land use, the land use chapter alone. Um, you're dealing with a real diverse cross-section of our city. Um, it'd be really hard to try to do um those code amendments and reach consensus. Um, it's, it's just, it's a big, it's a big lift. But we will be doing those housing code amendments hopefully concurrently with this comp plan because the state has provided really clear guidance on what we need to do. So we'll be doing some education as we do our outreach to say, well, what do you guys want? And then by the way, here's what we have to do. And having those conversations with the educational outreach as well as getting engagement outreach to um sort of customize the, the code amendments to best reflect our community. And, and the state rules are typically written that way so that jurisdiction. So that jurisdictions like ours are very different from Salem or other cities. We can craft our own response to those rules in a way that best reflects our community. So we have some flexibility, but there's also some rigidity there. But that guidance is clear enough that we can do that consistently or concurrently with the the policy and objectives that we'll be developing.
Other questions for Brett?
Yes.
Yes.
So first of all, thank you. This has been very interesting. I'm a newcomer to this process as it relates to a city. And I'm sure I'm going to learn a ton. So thanks for helping me get started. I know there are people more experienced with this on the call. But I'm wondering about time horizon and thoughts about how to get people in a zone to think about the future. Vision is notoriously interesting and difficult to achieve. And some people's vision is about two feet ahead of them and others would like to think in terms of 100 years. I think about when I first started to get to know some of our local land conservancies, and I was just amazed at an organization that has to consider things in perpetuity. Whenever they, whenever they are considering any work. So what are the thoughts about the time horizon to give people and how to achieve the best thinking forward for the community?
So I'm going to talk generally again, and then Leila, maybe you and I can can tag team this again. You know, as I was saying before, you know, what is appropriate for one community in terms of of gaining public input may work very differently in another. And so really, I would say what works best in Manzanita to be able to to be able to do community outreach, to be able to gain public input, to be able to get folks to participate and respond and engage and and use those tricks of the trade that that really have shown to be successful over over the past years. You know, there, there's not any deadline in terms of the conference of plan itself to be able to get anything wrapped up. Only thing that does is is the the code updates that that Leila was mentioning with regards to the residential housing things, but that's, that's, you know, separate from the conference of plan. But Leila, I mean, what's your thought in terms of timeframe and and some preliminary thoughts that 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 you have to be able to engage people and to and to be able to get people thinking big picture and visionary into the future?
Yeah, thanks, Brett. You know, in my mind, I think we start at 20 years. I feel like that a horizon for a plan like this makes sense because I I respect what you're asking in terms of like, is it 100 years, is it forever? But I think really giving people sort of a where are we going to be in 20 years? Because I think many of us can really think about where we were 20 years ago and what happened since then. And I think just a note for folks is our comprehensive plan horizon expired effectively in 2010. Our plan was to that that horizon, I think, at the time is 15 years. By the time it got adopted, it was 13. But I would caveat that by saying that we look at a 20 year horizon because I think that gives us a good amount of time to really consider what the changes we will make today typically don't happen overnight. They happen over a period of five, 10 years. But we should also be doing, even though we're not subject to it, we should as a practice do a periodic review. We didn't do that with our last comp plan so that we as a city are saying, okay, here's what our vision is for 20 years. Manzanita wants to be, you know, livable, sustainable, affordable, whatever it is, community. We developed goals and objectives to get there. But every three to five years, we start that process to say, are we still in the same place? Is our vision still what we've experienced? Because since I've taken this seat, spent a lot of time my first year sitting down with members of the community. And by and large, all of the issues that were brought up were related to growth. Manzanita has experienced, you know, record growth. I just had Scott pull housing starts, for example, and we were like in the single digits in the last five years up until two years ago, when we got up to like 30 to 40 housing starts, which is a lot for us. And people felt that. We also experienced a pandemic. And so I think having a longer horizon, and that could be 10 to 15 to 20 years, I think 20 years in my experience has been a good sort of gives people a chance to visualize what that future could look like in a realistic timeframe. It's not too far out, it's not too close. But we really should have, you know, I don't want to pre-cook it, but my hope is one of the policies we have is that we're going to be reviewing this every five years at a minimum to make sure that our vision and our policies are still consistent and frankly compliant with state law because it does change sometimes. And I guarantee it's probably changed since 2010. So that we keep current and then we're able to do maybe moderate modest updates over time as opposed to having to sort of rejigger the whole thing. Because we haven't really looked at it in almost 30 years. So that would be my starting point for discussion with the commission and with, you know, hopefully an advisory group. I have a whole community outreach idea that, you know, will hopefully get us to where we need to go. But that's, that's my thinking, 20 years.
Brett?
Go ahead. I'm you. Well, I would support a 20 year horizon and maybe, you know, one of the significant things that's different now is of course climate change. And so anticipating climate change and many of the plans that I've been involved with look at 2040 or 2050 and anticipate the climate at that time and then prepare the community or the building or whatever for that future horizon. So I would support, you know, maybe it's a 2045 kind of horizon. And then as we undertake it, we think about the context of today, but we also consider the context of tomorrow and think about how how we can adapt and adjust our plan to be able to create this wonderful livable community, even with changes that we know will be coming.
Brett, I wanted to ask you a little bit about community engagement. I know Leila just referred to thoughts that she has and she's already we've already taken some preliminary steps and successfully so on engaging the community. But this is a process this community has been looking forward to, and there's a lot of a lot of interest being expressed in it. The opportunity for the public to be formally engaged in the process is one thing. But in addition to the small number of community members that'll be formally engaged, there'll be there certainly will be a larger opportunity throughout for public engagement. And, you know, I noticed in your presentation, the guide, putting the people in planning and, you know, we can certainly learn from that. Can you point us to any particular communities that you think have done it particularly well? Smaller communities that have done a good job of engaging?
So, yeah, I mean, so let me talk about maybe rather than specific communities, but talk about some some approaches that have been used in smaller communities that have seen some benefit. And and maybe I'm going to also say, maybe talk a little bit about how community engagement's changing in this day and age as well. So I'm going to say, you know, first of all, at one point, when you saw community engagement, it was town hall meetings. And a lot of times when you have town hall meetings, you get kind of the same folks that participate in in those in those meetings. But if you have other ways to engage folks, either at markets or at community gatherings where there's you know, things are a little bit less formal, you can sometimes catch other folks who may not go to a formal town hall meeting. They're just not comfortable in that environment or it's just not their their cup of tea. And I think that's one thing to look at. You know, I think also it's looking at, are there any communities within the city, which you can point to say that that really maybe are not as participatory in typically in in these types of land use actions. And looking at ways to engage with those communities. If there, if there's a a community of color that, you know, you're able to reach out to, to be able to gain participation within that area. Diversity, equity and inclusion has really become more and more included in the public involvement components of the Oregon land use system over the years and really more and more focus on including any tribal interests, including any other, any other groups that maybe have been underrepresented in the past. My my biggest, I would say, recommendation is really look for ways to be able to step outside of the box a little bit to to be able to engage folks who maybe aren't the folks who participate in all the regular public meetings, to be able to get that broader sense of of public input from the whole community.
Yeah, if I could add to that, those are great comments. And I do think, yeah, sort of town halls were the the way to go. And we have an extremely engaged community here. So we get really great turnout at those things. But this is one of the reasons the community engagement part of the scope of work, for example, that I've drafted is actually, you know, I'm expecting it to be, you know, potentially a third of the overall contract. And so having a consultant team that really focuses or has a sub consultant that's really focused and experienced in this. Because this is, I would say, the top reason why this question's come up a number of times. Why can't we just do this in like six months and, you know, make it easy? Because if you want it to be good, then and you want it to be reflective of of the community. And to me, a good plan is one that's founded on the community, like the community being the ones to say, here's what we want. And then our job as subject matter experts is to translate that into policies and objectives that we can implement through our enabling ordinances. And so the community engagement portion of this, to me, is really the it's the end all be all, it's what it's the, it's the, it's the foundation of 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 the project. And so one of the tasks of the consultant team will to be developing a community engagement plan. And I'm expecting there to be workshops, we will do town halls, people love them here and expect it. But I also want to see more outreach both online. We have a very involved second homeowner community here, and they may not be here when we hold in-person meetings. And so we want to make sure that we're getting those folks to get engaged. We reach out to and to conduct one-on-one interviews and hold small group meetings. One of the things that, for example, we did when we were doing our comp plan update in Milwaukee is we had an advisory group, so I'm proposing we have an advisory group, which is made up primarily of community members, also technical advisors from, you know, Brett will be on that team with us and others from the county, for example, so that we're ensuring concurrence with our partners. But that those folks get trained and get resources to go out and hold small group meetings of their own and get folks together. So to try to find some ways in which we can engage in non-traditional ways, the market also is a great way to do that. But in, you know, engaging with the advisory committee will actually have the opportunity to, at least I'm proposing, to review and provide input on the community engagement plan. So it's not just myself and my hope is to have a member of planning commission and a member of city council work with me to develop what the, what the construct of that committee will look like so that we're getting folks in the community to say, oh, you know, actually, I know some folks that are Latinx that really are engaged in our community that we haven't talked to. And the best way to engage with those folks is to go to, you know, there might be a particular meeting. That's what we did in a couple of other cities I've worked in. So I'd like to see us have some flexibility in how we engage and where we engage and who we engage with. But I do see it as being kind of a mix of both in-person, online, big event, small event throughout the process. And I think the advisory committee, which because you mentioned, Councilor Spieg, will play a larger role in that. But they will also help us figure out how to get a little deeper into the community. So that's why it's going to take us a minute to get through this is because that outreach is it's the, it's the foundation of everything.
Other questions for Brett?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, just a quick one, maybe Leila can help with this one. But in many states, there's a overall growth anticipation. You know, that there's so many kids being born and so many people moving. And then the relationship between a community's plan and and that those growth statistics are somehow aligned. In some states, it's actually an assignment of growth. But as we look out, say, to 2040 or whatever, we would want to be anticipating a certain amount of a range of growth, I suspect. And so maybe both of you could just comment on that a little bit so that we would kind of understand, you know, as we move forward with this horizon, you know, what what's, what's going to happen?
Do you want to go first, Leila?
You go ahead.
Okay, okay. So you're correct. And and that that actually is included in the Oregon land land use system. The Portland State University Population Research Center does the population projections for jurisdictions across the state. And that's the data point that's used for all communities when you're starting to look at at housing land needs or employment land needs. That's the the statistical data that's procured. I mean, I will say that it's kind of an interesting time with regards to housing planning in that the the ways in which in which the state will be addressing housing need changed in this last legislative session. And so we're going to be going through a whole rulemaking process to be able to, you know, to address that. You know, and then, you know, in addition, Manzanita is within the area which is affected by the passage of Senate Bill 406, which applies the middle housing provisions that Leila was mentioning that the code amendments will be will be addressing. And so you are correct, Mr. Gregory, that 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 there are these baselines that will apply in your conference of plan update process. Not only for residential land need, it's also for employment land areas. But realize there was some of the residential side of things, there's some things that are going to be in play over the next little bit. Leila, I don't know if you want to add on to that?
I think you've covered most of it. So PSC's population projections are the foundation. Part of the scope of work for the consultant will be to establish baseline and future projected conditions for the time horizon that we're looking at for both residential and employment. And as Brett mentioned, I think Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, is January 2025. So right about the time we expect to be adopting our comp plan is when the state will be releasing their updated forecast for cities in terms of addressing housing needs. We can't wait that long to do our comp plan. But what I will say is, is that by addressing Senate Bill 406 and making our ordinance amendments that we will increase our capacity to, I think, capture whatever ends up coming out of that. Brett and I've had some conversations about this already because the horizon for us to make those changes for Senate Bill 406 is July of 2025. So if we need to do any course correcting, So if we need to do any course correcting, we'll know in January of 2025, hopefully, if things go as we expect them to. But again, I think we'll be increasing capacity for housing with the changes that I anticipate we will be needing to make to our residential elements of our housing ordinance. And part of the scope of work will include doing some future conditions, potentially some different scenarios of how that could get played out in different land use types. And my hope is that that will be an interactive process with the community to say, okay, we are expecting X amount of new residents and we're expecting X amount of new jobs. How would you like that to look in our community? Is it infill? Is it new development? If it's new development, where, you know, we only have one sort of area in our UGB that can go, what does that look like? So part of the the planning process will include that. But yeah, that's a great question. And that's actually one of the foundations of the comp plan process is having that kind of baseline. Here's where we are today and here's where we expect to be in 20 years.
Yeah, and and to just to confirm that, as Leila had mentioned, the application of the new legislation, which deals with how you calculate residential land need and capacity, the data that will be, after the rulemaking is done, then the data from Portland State University and also a housing allocation will be announced by the Department of Land Conservation and Development in January of 2025. So that's that's as Leila had mentioned, that's the 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 target date for that rolling out.
Okay, I think Catherine had a question and Frank and John. So Catherine?
I'm good right now. Thanks.
Okay, and Frank?
Yes, Brett, thanks for your expertise today. Just in generally speaking, my question is, do you have any general cautions for the commission going forward for not getting bogged down and getting deep into the weeds? Because there's just so much that we'll be looking at. And based on your experience, maybe there's something that, you know, planning commissions get tripped up on or just some general advice in that area?
Yeah, here's what I'm gonna say is that I think that as you go along, you may have something that if you come to a point where you're you're needing to 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 take a pause on it. I don't think there's there's anything wrong with with saying, hey, we need to move on to another topic. If you're working on a specific section and you're stymied, you come to, you know, there's there's some area where you can't come to consensus. You know, give it some time and then come back to it. I I honestly can say that, you know, I've seen some times where there have to be some focused meetings to be able to come to some resolution and be able to understand perspectives on both sides and to talk through those. And to be able to to be able to come to some level of consensus. I think that that right there, you know, my whole point is, don't get to where you you can't move forward in other areas. It's maybe you come back and revisit a certain area. But remember, it's a healthy thing to be able to have dialogue and to be able to have the dialogue during the development of the conference of plan process. Because what will happen is if you go to adoption without the the additional time or dialogue, it's going to come up during the public hearing process before the planning commission and their city council. Maybe you don't come to 100% consensus, but you can definitely then, if you've had the conversations, you can definitely dialogue that that it hasn't been glossed over, that it hasn't been just thrown aside, that there really has been some folks that have rolled up their sleeves to try and 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 work on a specific topic. I've seen some times where a certain aspect in a conference of plan process takes a little bit more time. But I think it's, in my opinion, it's worth the effort to really dive down into that. But just don't, 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 don't keep the the rest of the entire process from moving forward, if that makes sense. Leila, do you have any other aspects and perspectives on on that that topic?
Well, I've used that strategy and it works. But the only other thing I would add to that, it's a great question, Frank, is trust the process. You know, by the time this hits the planning commission, we will have talked to the community, we'll have revised, we've talked to the community, we've talked to an advisory committee. You know, by the time it gets to you, it isn't to say, and a big part of it is to get your feedback. We will go back and revise, that nothing's in stone. And so things can get changed. But do trust the process because sometimes in my past experience, I've done a number of comp plans. You know, someone will bring something up that is valid, but has been addressed kind of through the community outreach process, through the advisory committee process, and was left off for a particular reason. And so I think having an open mind. And if you do get to a point where there's no, you know, maybe as an individual on the commission just doesn't agree, like Brett said, you know, air that, have those discussions. But I think, and I would say this, just as for any decision, make the decision and commit to the outcome, even if it's, you know, if the the majority goes one direction. Ideally, everyone reaches consensus. That's what we always want to try to achieve. But we do have to trust the the democratic process and the process in which I think we will have a very robust outreach process. And by the time it gets to you, it will have been really well vetted and, you know, trust the staff and your other colleagues. And I think that if we can kind of go into this with that mindset of collaborative trusting relationships, we can, we can have those hard discussions. Like Brett said, pause when we need to to come back and and work through them. But that ultimately, we know we need to get to a decision in order to get to get this thing done and that we commit to whatever that outcome looks like.
Okay, John, you've got a question?
I do. And I don't know if this is a Brett question or a Leila question, or Frank may know the answer to this. And I don't think it takes a rocket science, a rocket scientist to discern the next 25 years between now and wherever, 2050, is there's going to be a lot of change and it's going to happen quickly. And and Mert already talked about the environmental issues and climate change and that sort of thing that we're going to kind of have to be prescient about and deal with it as best we can. But there are housing and social issues and work life sort of issues. And I guess my question is, historically, does the PSU data on housing deal with situations like Manzanita where, you know, 75% of our housing is second homes? And and then there's the issue of, okay, are people, you know, I mean, I've seen it over the COVID timeline, you know, people have moved here and started working from Manzanita that never did before. Does does the PSU data have any kind of insight on that? Or are we kind of on our own? And if we're kind of on our own, can you guys recommend any place we can look for information on that?
And so, yeah, I'd be glad to to tackle that question to start off with. And so first of all, I don't think that anyone really was expecting some of the outcomes coming post pandemic with a lot of what happens. I mean, I was city manager in Astoria through the pandemic, and we saw the same thing in Astoria as you're seeing in Manzanita. Astoria's population went above 10,000 for the first time since World War II. And, I mean, it was, and the amount of people that moved out that area and then began starting to work remotely and some of the the changes that that we saw. And and I'm gonna say that, you know, I hear from jurisdictions up and down the coast about how prior population projections were outstripped during the during the pandemic. So now let's talk about a little bit about what's moving forward in the new legislation which was passed dealing with housing planning in the future. So currently, under under current law, issues dealing with second home ownership and calculating how many homes are occupied as second homes was not factored into the the housing need and housing capacity conversation. That will be something that jurisdictions will be able to factor moving forward under the the new legislation which was passed. So, you know, you will be able to look and see what is your, what is your second home ownership rate? And if you're looking at planning for housing need moving into the future, you're able to, to simplify things, deduct the residences that are used as second homes. So that's the legislature is is now responding to the issue that that coastal communities and many times the central Oregon communities were raising about about second home ownership rates. Leila, did you have anything else you wanted to add on that? Okay.
Thank you, Brett.
Sure.
John, you've got a question?
Yeah, I do. Thanks. You know, Manzanita is special, maybe even one of a kind, which is why we all live here or as in my case, have a second home here. Even so, what we're going to do, create a comprehensive plan, is something that every other city in the state has done or is doing. And so I'm sure there's lots of commonalities and I don't want to spend a lot of time reinventing the wheel as in like coming up with language. So what I'm wondering is, is there a a book of forms, form language? You know, that other cities use that we can consult, you know, that we can pick and choose from in terms of finding language, you know, albeit to fit our special needs, but we we're in the, right now, we're in the process of trying to come up with a definition of park or our zoning ordinance. And it was helpful to look around and see how other cities have defined that term in their zoning code. So is there like a model comprehensive plan? Or even a book of model types that we can consult in this process?
So Leila, I want you to be able to talk a little bit about this, but let me talk kind of generally on on this. There 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 is, you can go and you can look at different jurisdictions in terms of styles for templates. You know, there's, there's the very kind of basic approach where you take the applicable statewide planning goals and you have a section which corresponds to each one of those statewide planning goals. And you have your existing condition section and so forth. But, you know, there is a model development code that DLCD has, but there really is not a model comprehensive plan. And and the and while there are going to be similarities to each each one, this is again where each community gets to talk about their own vision, about what they they want. Now, when you hire a consultant, you're going to be able to look at probably what the consultants are bringing to the table in terms of individual style and their and and approach into how they format a conference of plan. And those consultants are going to have, you know, most likely some some base language that they're going to bring to the table, which is consistent across the board. But they're going to know where you need to be able to fill in the blanks to be able to to make it Manzanita's conference of plan. And so I I think kind of the key is, you know, whenever you're going through that that process of looking at at who to bring to the tables, looking at that at that issue of fit. So Leila, do you want to chime in a little bit more?
Yeah, I think you actually said exactly what I would have said is that there isn't a model comp plan. But that is where the consultant does play a really critical role. And having, and I spent several years as a comprehensive plan consultant and, you know, I think I worked for the best guy in the country on this, John Fragadessi. But we would, actually, that's why we were selected is because we we understood the language of comp plans. I think good work should be replicated. And so that's one of the qualifications that we'll be evaluating our RFP responses on is what is your experience? What kind of comp plans have you done? And I guarantee those folks will be able to come to the table with some model language. They will likely, they'll also start with what we have. You know, we're not throwing the whole thing out the window. We're going to start with what we have, do what we call both a comp plan and audit of that. How does this comply with state law? What's still relevant? What seems like it needs to be updated? So that we're not starting from the beginning. We're starting with what we have. We're looking at what is relevant. We start with a vision. That's kind of where, in my experience, you could start is like, what's the big picture? What do we look like? And then we look at the comp plan that we have now compared against that vision, compared against the updated statewide goals, find out where the conflicts are, find out where the things are that are still relevant, and then what's missing? And a good, a good consultant will have sort of a resource pile of language. You know, we replicated stuff in Dallas that we did in Utah, that we did in Chicago. But we also specialize that language to really respond to the unique condition of those very different jurisdictions. But generally speaking, there is a lot of commonality. And so that's where having a really experienced and thoughtful consultant that's done good work will be able to bring that experience to the table.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Brett?
Karen's got her hand up, yeah.
Right.
Thanks, I'm going to try to squeeze my question in as fast as I can so the dogs don't start barking behind me. But I am just wondering if you would give us any advice. All that we have are relatively new members on the planning commission. We have some relatively new members of city council or will shortly have an even newer member of city council. And I'm wondering if you have any advice on how much involvement, personal involvement, we should have as volunteers? Part of why we volunteer is that we want, we hold the best interests of the city in our hands and we want to influence in many ways the direction that the city takes. And I'm wondering, as the bodies that will be hearing the responses from our citizens, how much direction should, how, I mean, I, should we be involved in kind of moving or nudging the citizenry at these at these informational meetings? Or should we just be basically listening? Or should we not be involved at all until it comes to the various bodies for a hearing? Do you have any advice or suggestions?
Leila, how about if you you start on in terms, because you're talking a little bit about some of your thoughts about process? And maybe if you want to start talking about that, I can give them maybe some follow up kind of suggestions.
It'll be interesting to see if we're on the same page. So in my experience, when you're doing community outreach, I think decision makers actually kind of need to hang in the background and just do a lot of listening. Because ultimately, you're the ones that make the final decision. Your decision is really based on the community outreach. So, you know, I would actually actively discourage members of my council to show up to community meetings where there's actually dialogue happening because folks can't help but be influenced by what you might think as an authority figure or as a decision maker. So that's kind of my own personal. So that's kind of my own personal take on it. It isn't to say you shouldn't participate or listen and come and ask questions, but being an active participant, sometimes elected officials or appointed officials who are decision makers can, you know, accidentally or unintentionally influence the outcome. What you, what I really feel like we want to get when we're doing community engagement is just that raw input, because you will ultimately, and that's where you have subject matter experts, you have folks that are, you know, trained in this, who can then take that community feedback and distill it down. So for example, one of the communities I've, I've worked in, I guess Milwaukee is the most recent comp plan I did, so I'm sorry I keep referencing that. But we got a lot of feedback on certain, you know, development types and how we should develop. And like 90% of the feedback we got from the community was like illegal. We couldn't actually do any of that. But we heard folks and said, okay, we kind of understand what you're getting at here. We've crafted these policies to try to get at the tenor of what you're saying. But here's why we didn't include limiting this kind of development because it's, you know, it's illegal. We can't do that. And so, so there's an educational component. And as a decision maker, you guys are going to be at the forefront of working with staff. And again, that's where I would say really trust your team, trust your staff, trust the subject matter experts to distill that, but challenge us and make sure that we're being true to the feedback and the input from the community. But I think to keep the process really pure, letting those community members just sort of freely speak, get that stuff out. And then we find a way to really respond to the majority of that feedback in one way or another. It's included for this reason and it's not included for this reason. And so that would be my, my suggestion, Brett. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
So, so let me, and let me first say, I agree with a lot of what, what Leila said. But first of all, to answer your question, you know, as members of the city council and the planning commission, because you are elected and or appointed as leaders with regards to land use matters. You know, whenever there are going to be public meetings or events, do what you can to encourage people to participate. I mean, you, you have, you have the ability, because people are looking to you as the city councillors, as the planning commissioners, to having a bit of a subject matter interest or, you know, on the, on these topics and, and help get the word out. I mean, that's the one thing I can say is that you can do first and foremost is help get the word out about what is happening and when those public meetings are going to be happening. You know, I would also then, you know, you know, secondly, say, participate, when I say participate, attend those, those meetings to be able to listen. Because, you know, it's, if, if you can, to be able to just be hearing the conversation so that whenever you do get to a decision making process, you know, you, you have that background. But I, I do agree with, with Leila, you know, that if, when there's public comment that's, that's coming in, where I've seen a lot of positive work is when the elected officials really are just doing that. They're, they're listening. They're hearing what the community is saying. And, and then they are able to hear all the voices, all the perspectives from the community without tipping their hat as to where they may, what they may be thinking, what the council may be thinking. Because you want to be able to have someone feel comfortable in, in stating their perspective on something at these, these public meeting processes. And then if there's something that you have a specific, you know, question about and want to dialogue, I mean, you, you're able to, you know, to talk to, to Leila and to be able to talk a little bit more to, if, if you're working through some things. You know, and, and wanting to, you know, to dialogue about a specific subject. And that's where I do agree with, with Leila is, is attend the meetings and, and hold back from being the active participant as, as Leila had, had, had discussed. And, and let the community process happen. Let the community be able to, to state what they would like to see in the future. And then you'll be able to have your opportunity to be able to be more involved in the, in the decision making process and, and be able to come converse with Leila about some of your thoughts about some things along the way. And if there's a concern. Leila, do you, would you kind of, is that, we kind of think, I think we're kind of on the same page there.
I do. Yep. Thanks, Brett.
Looks like Catherine does have a question, yes. You're on, you're on mute. There you go.
You didn't hear me use my favorite swear word while I was muting myself. So the mute was really good for that. Okay. So I kind of heard two things and, and when I ever hear that, I always like to stop and clarify. So what I'm picturing, just as a council member, would be the showing up, listening. So ears open and, you know, even when, even if somebody directly comes at me or another council member with a question, be there to listen. Because I think a process can work where we're doing that, showing our interest and commitment to this, to the community and also showing the trust and collaborative relationship with city managers, staff and the consultants who we'll be working with. So I think all those things are possible. I thought I had heard a little bit earlier, the idea of staying away from it altogether. And, and I'm frankly not in favor of that. Because I think part of, to the original question that was asked, I think part of our commitment to this is showing up. And some of this is going to be a commitment over a long period of time. And we're going to be asking a lot of the community to show up over a long period of time. And, and so we're in it, we're in it together. And the more we can listen directly, the better, the better job we can do once it gets to us.
Yeah, thanks for, for pointing that out, Catherine. What I meant, stay out of it. I'll clarify what I meant, which is kind of what Brett said a little more eloquently, which is just listen, don't get involved in the discussion necessarily. Because you want that discussion to be kind of a natural, organic discussion. But do attend, do participate in that sense where you're just listening, but don't get engaged. I think it's better to be there as a support and a listener, not as an active participant in those kinds of engagement opportunities. Because like as Brett mentioned, you all will have that opportunity for sure. And then certainly, since I'll be managing this process for the city, have some background in it. I'm always here to, to help you work through that as a decision maker. Or if you have heard something in a meeting you want a little more clarification on, that's my job. I'm here to help. But thanks for pointing that out. No, be involved. Just, just listen.
And let, let, let me maybe, maybe add a little bit more and, and see whether you would concur at this as well. I mean, and, you know, I would say that it's, it's not attend a meeting and if someone comes up to you to say, oh, I can't talk, you know, I'm, I mean, but, but to be able to engage with people and say, hey, I'm trying to under, I mean, if someone has a an idea or a position on something, feel free to engage with them and dialogue about, about things back and forth. I think it's just always maybe best to not, to say, oh, this, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's good to be able to dialogue without saying exactly, hey, this is the way I, I think we should go, because I think it's good to, someone may come up to you next with a, with a, a statement which may, may change your perspective on things. So feel free to engage with folks, but not go out and, and drive the, the conversation. Leila, do you agree with that?
100%. Yes.
So let me give myself some advice then. We get buttonholed all the time at the grocery store, at the library, the post office. Hey, I heard this about that. And I guess since we won't be involved in the sculpting of the comprehensive plan, if someone comes up to us with an idea, in order for that idea to be heard by the proper people at the proper time, we should encourage them to send that feedback through survey or the next town hall meeting or whatever it is, rather than telling me. Because I, I probably shouldn't be responsible for passing along information. Is that, that makes sense? I should encourage, yes, I'll listen to you. But the appropriate way to get that feedback into the system is to go through one of the public processes rather than making, you know, having me pass that information.
Yeah, that's.
Make a decision on it.
Yeah, I think you really framed it up perfectly, Karen. That's, that's exactly right. And, you know, we'll have a project website. We'll have, you know, it's sort of the same when you're dealing with a land use application, right? And someone comes up to you, it's like, hey, I really hate this. And you're like, great. Public comment will be taken at the next planning commission meeting or feel free to submit in writing to planning at Manzanita. Do the same thing so that people are involved directly in the process and not indirectly through, through you. And you guys will be resources to members of the community, as Brett said, encouraging people to go or directing people to the appropriate channels in which they should be in, involved. And when in doubt, have them just shoot an email to the planning department and we'll, we'll get it there. But ideally they're engaging in the process because a lot of, a lot of a comp plan process is actually tracking, monitoring and really responding to an enormous volume of public feedback. So the more that we can sort of focus that into the right channels, the, the more likely that comment will be fully heard. So I think that's exactly right. Help direct, educate and engage people in the process.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's always.
The process.
Yeah, I think it's always the ability to say, you know, you're, you're listening to someone on aisle three of Fresh Foods and, and, you know, you can say, hey, there's going to be a public meeting in, in two weeks. And, or, you know, feel free to show up there, you know, make sure, make sure you also send that on to the online and, you know, have the, have the email address memorized so that, so you can say, I'm, I'm listening to you. At the same time, we want to make sure that, that your, your thoughts are fully captured as a part of the whole process.
Okay, any more questions for Brett? And if not, Leila, while we have some folks from the public here, could you just preview for all of us? This group's going to get together again pretty soon on the 21st, I believe, of October for joint training. Just a little bit about that?
Sure, thanks, Jerry. So yeah, we'll be having an all day training kind of on everything but the legislative land use process. We'll go over that briefly, but with Brett's education today, we won't spend as much time on that, but it will be an all day event that will be held at the Pine Grove Community House on October 21st. I think we're planning, I haven't got the agenda fully worked out, but planning to meet from about nine till 3:00 PM. And we'll be going through more focusing on permits and land use applications. And so trying to get folks up to speed or at least to refresh your course for some on kind of the basics around more of the, we call it current planning. What we talked about today is really long range planning. This would be more current planning. So, so that'll be happening on the 21st. And I, we're not planning to broadcast that via ZOO because it's an all day event. But if folks do want to listen in, we will have a call in number and that will be on the agenda.
Great. Karen, anything on your end?
Uh, nope.
Okay.
We're good.
Leila, back to you. Anything else you need to cover?
No, I think as folks know, we, we unfortunately had to cancel our city council meeting last week. So we will be reconvening with a monster agenda on November 8th. Do keep a lookout. I need to poll the council, but I'm, I'm hoping we can maybe start that meeting a little early to cover some of the, the business that we were unable to cover that's time sensitive, including our first public hearing on a post adoption plan amendment, which we did provide DLCD with adequate notice. But we did have to postpone that first hearing was supposed to be scheduled, was scheduled for last Wednesday and it'll be now on November 8th. And that's the adoption of Goal 12, which is new text amendments to our comprehensive plan. So it's like our first foray into a comp plan update. And it'll be adopting the TSP by reference and then the policies that are outlined in that document. So that will be happening November 8th. That also means that we're postponing the discussion about the ordinance amendments because we wanted council to have at least a, a public hearing and a vote on the TSP before we started the enabling ordinance language. So that will be postponed until November as well. But the planning commission will receive the sort of amended ordinance changes. So you have some time to study that before the meeting in November. But so those are, those are some quick announcements. We'll get the agendas posted. So folks that are interested can check the city calendar and see when that meeting starts and be ready for a good, long, healthy meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that. And thank you very much, Brett, for your time today. And I'm sure time.
Yeah, thanks, Brett.
Away in the future. So. Thanks a lot. Great joint meeting of the planning commission and the city council. And we're adjourned at three, well, I'm sorry, I'm on the East Coast. It's 3:45.
We've had it three.
45 there, not 3:45 here. Good night and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks.